Welcome, everyone. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Veronica, can I get a roll call?
Yes. Mr. Gomez Pereira.
Present.
Ms. Alfaro. Ms. Hernandez.
Present.
Mr. Oregan.
Present.
Ms. Covas Caraballo.
Present.
Ms. Valderas.
Present.
Dr. Neville is out today. Ms. Enriquez.
Present.
And Ms. Cabral.
Present.
That's seven members present and two absent.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to move the school committee regular minutes?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to public comment. If there is anyone that would like to make a public comment, you can do so by... Veronica, do you want them to sign in or...
It's okay, I'll take down their information.
Okay.
Just state your name and address.
Okay, can you just state your name and your address? If there's any, if there's any members that have, are not here but, and have sent forward written comments, please forward, give those to Veronica and we'll take them as correspondence, not hear them here now. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Kathryn Anderson. I live at 15 Powder House Terrace in Somerville, and I'm the president of the Chelsea Teachers Union and an eighth grade special education liaison at the Brown Middle School. We have members speaking here tonight to the priorities in our ongoing contract campaign with the district. Those priorities are paid parental and family leave, pay for paras working in sub-separate classrooms, class size and caseload caps, and competitive wages. In our ongoing negotiations, we are seeing movement from the district, but we need transformational change in our wages and working conditions in order to get our kids what they need. Right now, there are, at least to the best record we received from the district, there are forty-three open positions across Chelsea Public Schools. Twenty of those are in the special education department, and twelve of them are for English language and multilingual learners. To get a sense of what this is like for kids, I'll tell you a little bit about what BMS has been like, the Brown has been like, over the past few years. Last year, the eighth grade students had no science teacher for the entire school year. They also had no transitional EL teacher. Our seventh grade students went almost half the year without a science teacher. This year, in the eighth grade, a science teacher was hired in October, a special education teacher was hired in October, the EL teacher was finally hired in January, a long-term sub was hired for the math position in March, and another sped position has gone unfilled the entire school year. We're asking for changes that will have a dramatic effect on our contract, but that's what's necessary to get our kids not just in education, but the education that they deserve. To stay competitive with surrounding districts and to move Chelsea to the head of the field instead of constantly trying to keep up, we need to make transformational change. It will be difficult and it will be hard work, but in order to prevent huge vacancies in the future, we need to make a competitive environment so we're not moving millions out of vacant positions and instead are paying those in salaries from the start of the year. I look forward to hearing from our members tonight, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Carrie Miller, 52 Murray Hill Road in Malden. Good evening. My name is Carrie Miller, and I am the lead history teacher at Chelsea High School. I have worked at Chelsea High School for nine years. When I started at Chelsea, my husband and I knew we wanted to have children, but the lack of paid leave forced us to wait to start our family until I had enough sick days to cover the allotted leave allowed at that time. Eight weeks. This meant that I worked for three years without taking a single sick day so that I could accumulate the forty days needed to take eight weeks off to be with my future newborn child. For three years, I pushed through countless illnesses and complete exhaustion to be at work. For three years, I skipped family events to be at work, all in the hopes of having a child. Finally, in my third year at Chelsea, I had enough sick days that my husband and I could start our family. When I had my first daughter, I had enough sick days to cover the eight weeks, which was the maximum allowed by Chelsea at that time. My husband and I could not afford for me to take unpaid leave, so I returned a week to work at exactly eight weeks postpartum. At the time, my child was not sleeping because of colic, which meant I was not sleeping. I was still bleeding and recovering from the trauma of a rough childbirth, and I was a brand-new mom struggling to figure out what I was doing. I was not ready to return to work, but again, the lack of paid leave forced me into a situation that was not good for anyone. My students received an exhausted shell of a teacher. With this first child, I developed severe postpartum depression and anxiety that crippled me for the entire first year of her life. After much therapy, I now recognize that much of my depression and anxiety stemmed from being forced to return to work when I was not physically or mentally ready. I am grateful to be in a better mental health space now, but I will never get back that first year of my child's life. When my husband and I decided to expand our family, we again had to consider the logistics of leave. Initially, I was hopeful because the state had recently passed paid parental leave for all, but then I was devastated to learn that municipal employees were exempt, and yet again, I would have to figure out how to take maternity leave using only sick days. My second daughter was born almost exactly three years after my first, but having a young child in daycare meant I used many of my yearly sick days in those three years, so I did not have enough sick days to cover my maternity leave the second time. I used all of my remaining sick days to cover five weeks of leave and had to take the rest of my leave unpaid. Fortunately, my husband and I were in a better place financially, so I could take this unpaid leave, but not everyone has this privilege. I am done having children, but I am deeply committed to fighting for paid leave for all parents. Our current system forces people to base major family planning decisions around the number of sick days they have. Our current system forces people to ignore their bodies and families and to attend work at all costs so that they can potentially have a child in the future. Educators commit their lives to caring for and guiding other people's children. The least we could do is make it possible for them to spend the first months of their own child's life with them. We deserve this opportunity, and it's time to do better. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school community. My name is Erin Madden, and I live at 4 Nixon Lane in Stonem, Massachusetts. I have been a dedicated second-grade teacher in the bilingual Caminos program at the Kelly School for the last six years. I have been blessed to work alongside my amazing Spanish counterpart who has served over twenty-nine years in our district, and I would love to say I could stick it out and stay to serve this outstanding community for that long. However, as our teacher contract stands, I will be leaving soon for a district that values their teachers enough to offer a paid parental leave. I am a new mom to an amazing two-year-old little boy. My partner, Dennis, a Chelsea native himself, and I would love another child, and I would need to save my sick days for another six years, like I did before, and this is assuming my son or I are never sick. He will be eight by the time I have saved enough to give him a sibling. I will be in my forties by then, possibly unable to have another child. Like many of my colleagues, I ration my sick time. You just heard her. In some cases, bringing illness into my classroom when I should have been in bed. When the Chelsea Teachers Union addressed the need for paid parental leave, the best the district said they could do was ten days. I know recovering from childbirth is a challenging and physically demanding process, particularly for those who undergo cesarean sections as I did. The doctor told me my recovery would be four to six weeks, not ten days. I am delaying my plan to grow my family as I cannot take unpaid time and still pay my mortgage. The notion that one can even begin to recuperate and return to work within a mere ten days is unrealistic and, quite frankly, detrimental to the health of the mother and the well-being of the child, never mind the students, who will inevitably suffer as the quality of instruction will diminish upon my return. Paid parental leave is not a matter of fairness, it is a matter of basic human decency and respect for our city employees. Recently, an amazing coworker felt the need to leave the district. She was doing fabulous work, supporting our new students, who were not only new to our school mid-year, but new to our country. I absorbed eight of them in my classroom alone. I miss her support, and when she gave her notice, she clarified that she left because she wanted to start a family but was not in this, but not in this district as she would not be paid. She is just one of many who have left due to the harmful parental leave policy that this district maintains. Without paid parental leave, our district will continue to lose amazing educators. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I cannot think of a better way to appreciate us than to give us paid parental leave that is the law for the rest of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Just so everyone knows, I've got to say at the beginning, it's a three-minute time, so just to give it... So, because I know there's going to be a lot of people coming up, we want to make sure that we allot everybody the time, okay? So, sorry.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Juan de Vega, and I live at 40 Williams Street in Chelsea. I am a sub-separate parent professional at Chelsea High School, and I come from a very humble and serviceable home and a strong political family that continuously fights for basic human rights of this community. As a daughter, sister, and mom, I know what I would want for them, and I bring this to my job each and every single day from 7:45 to 2:30. The very moment the almost twenty-five students are welcomed and off the bus, my day begins. My job requires wearing many hats, and I'd like to walk you through what just one day in the life of a sub-separate parent looks like by demonstrating the daily minute-by-minute change of hats. I'm a mom, or mama Vega, as I've earned from these extraordinary students. They need support for basic human needs, tying their shoes, getting a Band-Aid for a hangnail, washing their hands, and even monitoring their toileting, getting them to eat and sometimes even cutting their food into little pieces because they have a tendency to choke, getting them to class on time and even just how to play nice with each other. Keeping a daily nurturing routine for these guys is super important for them. A social worker, teaching them to seek guidance while they need different supports at a new elective class they feel nervous about. When in crisis, coordinating discare and plan is a crucial time for social work support at graduation practice or prom. And yes, Ms. Ward made sure that we got our juniors and seniors to prom last year, and they can't wait to go this year. And thank you, Chavi and Tanya, for getting them there safely. I'm an advocate and a mediator, teaching them to advocate for themselves. We have students getting driving licenses, becoming paras, or even just helping them to handle an issue with another student or an adult. A parent liaison, we're collaborating with parents at any given time, and this is a very important relationship. A teacher, adaptive teaching for wide range of subjects. A friend, they speak of crushes and love interests and, as well as the drama that comes with it. And I'm an athlete, invested in a slew of sneakers to either chase students around or motivate them to participate in physical education, dance, or just do laps around the field. Me and the other sub-separate paras are putting out fires all day, and as rewarding as this is, it is exhaustingly demanding physically and emotionally. It also means our kids, who are the most vulnerable and high needs in the district, aren't getting the high quality of highly-trained support they need and deserve at this stage. These guys require the utmost reliable routine, and although I'm kicking this job's butt, I know my worth, so in order to retain dedicated and qualified support in the district for our future students, tonight we're asking for livable wages in our contract because it's what we, the kids, and the community deserve. Thank you.
Hello, members of the school committee. My name is Michelle Block. I will first be presenting on behalf of Virginia Kime, a school district, district school psychologist who lives in Braintree. The caseload for school psychologists in Chelsea this year has reached a critical overload, just as it did last year. Currently, two school psychologists have one hundred and fifty-six evaluations each, with more coming. Consultants are helping, but it's still not enough when we're up until after midnight many nights writing reports. Last night, it was 1:45 a.m. when I finished another report. There are twenty-one school days in May, and we're expected to evaluate twenty-seven children this month. How can we possibly test, write reports, and attend all of those IEP meetings with integrity? A typical workload is eight to twelve evaluations per month. Having more than double that is a disservice to our students, some of the most vulnerable in the district, who were undoubtedly affected by COVID-19 and are still reeling in the aftermath. In addition, not enough is being done to hire more outside psychologists to help out, yet the district has proposed cutting of position. We need more psychologists, not fewer, and with job postings not being updated for months, strong candidates will overlook these positions. A caseload of one psychologist to five hundred students for testing only is recommended by our professional organization. It would be an even smaller ratio if we added counseling caseloads. How many do we have in our district of over sixty-six hundred students? Two, when we should have thirteen. I truly feel like I'm being treated like a workhorse in the current situation. How, especially during Mental Health Awareness Month, can your two district psychologists support our students' well-being when our own is being compromised? A change must happen now. Now, I will share as myself. My name is Michelle Block, and I'm a speech-language pathologist living in Dorchester.
The next, if anybody else has a written one, it needs to be forwarded to Veto, Veronica. You only read the ones that are yours, okay? So if there's anyone that has any, just forward them on to Veronica. We'll take them as correspondence. Read the ones that are for yourself, okay?
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michelle Block, and I'm a speech-language pathologist living in Dorchester. I will also share about my caseload, or as one of my fourth graders calls it, my queso. I service students all across the district. You may remember that I spoke about this issue two years ago. While our team has grown, I continue to be the only bilingual SLP in the district from first to twelfth grade. That means if my services are needed somewhere other than the complex, whether that's at an IEP meeting, testing in or out of district, or for services at another school, my elementary students suffer.
When Ms. Block has to skip our group, I feel sad and mad 'cause we're doing speech and language, and we cannot put our favorite kid right at that cap.
To quote my student, they said, "When Ms. Block has to skip our group, I feel sad and mad." With a caseload cap, I could give students the Ms. Block they deserve, one who shows up for them physically and mentally and consistently delivers their services. How are we, Chelsea Public Schools, okay with denying our most vulnerable students the quality and quantity of services they deserve? With a caseload cap, we could avoid having to just smush them all together into one group. After all, isn't that what an individualized education plan is supposed to be? I stand with my service provider colleagues, SLPs, PTs, OTs, psychologists, asking for your help in giving these students what they deserve. We're lifting up the voices of our students who are still learning to advocate for themselves and their services. Will you help make their voices heard too? Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your input. We'll take everything into consideration. We'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
Great. Now I get to, I'm excited to report on the Multiplying Good Recognition. So each spring, the Students in Action teams with Multiplying Good participate in an end-of-year celebration event, an event that showcases their community's service impact. This year, the celebration was held at the Museo Science in a room with expansive windows offering stunning views of the Charles River. Teams present on their projects and receive a service resume and a Multiplying Good Certificate of Excellence, which summarizes and honors their annual contributions. This year's focus on enhancing school culture at Chelsea High School through the introduction of Fiesta Friday. Every other Friday, students are invited to participate in games during lunch where they can win prizes and enjoy snacks. Our goal is to establish Fiesta Friday as a lasting tradition that fosters community spirit and enhances the school culture. Their presentation had to focus on process, impact, and learning. The students' presentation was amazing, and we were so proud of them, and they represented Chelsea very well in front of one hundred people from around the Boston area. So I would like to first thank Erin Murray, a teacher at Chelsea High School, and Ashley Flores for working with our students, and then we do have some certificates for our students. So the first certificate that we have, and if students, when we call your name, if you can come up and then hold your certificate, and we'll take a picture at the end with everybody. So the first student we have is Jose Tejeda. So...
Congratulations.
Congratulations. The second, our second student is Ashley Martinez.
Congratulations.
Our third student is Luis Perez.
Congratulations.
Dariana Mejia. Johan Sanchez.
Take your hoodie off. Take your hoodie off. That head off.
And then Aileen Galido.
Congratulations.
Donis Contreras. Congratulations.
Take your hat off.
And then...
Congratulations.
Margie Valario.
Congratulations.
And then for our teachers, Erin Murray. And then Ashley Flores.
Thank you.
If we can get a group with the students and the teachers and then school committee.
Open up your certificates.
So we, we do not have any presentations for tonight, but we do have our indicators of success. Mr. Adam Delaney, our deputy superintendent, and Adam, you only have June left. I will miss your indicators of success.
We'll have one more, I believe.
Yes, one more.
I don't want to talk about this, so can we just move on, please?
All right, thank you very much. I'll be reporting tonight on our daily attendance rates, our dropout rates, our four-year graduation rates, and five-year graduation rates that we've been waiting for, for a few months now, they were finally released, our mobility rates, and our failing grades. For our daily attendance rate, we've had some really good news for a few straight months. We were bound to have a little bit of a drop-off, and again, so if you remember, I compare from month to month, and so if we improve from the previous month, it's green; if we drop from the previous month, it's red. So as you can see in the month column, the only grades that increased over March, from March to April, were grade one, grade three, and our pre-K. Everyone else dropped a little bit, but that's after four consecutive months of improvement, so, you know, that's okay. The good news here, though, is that when we do the on-pace trajectories as compared, comparing last year's total attendance rate to this year's rate at this point, we are tracking to beat last year in every grade, with the exception of grades six, nine, and ten. Every other grade is on track to beat last year's percentage, and so that's really good news, particularly with a new attendance policy that we've been using. So, moving on to our four-year and five-year graduation rates. These we've been waiting for, for a few months. The reason why we have to wait is because it comes from the state to be official, and as you can see, we do have a drop. So our four-year graduation rate, and this is for students who graduated last year in the 22-23 school year, the graduation rate was sixty-four point one. The year before was sixty-six point two. But you can actually go back all the way to pre-COVID, and it's been consistently about sixty-six, so we did have a drop last year. And in the five-year graduation rate, it dropped from seventy-five point seven in the 2021 school year to seventy-two point five in the 2122 school year, but that did improve over the pre-COVID year of seventy-one point six. Our dropout rates, we are currently at one hundred thirty dropouts at a rate of seven point zero two, which is higher than last year. Last year was five point two two at this point in the year. And when you break it down per, as we look at our language learners and our students with disabilities, as well as our duly-identified students, students who are not identified in any of those categories, we are dropping out at a three point eight seven percent rate. Our language learners are dropping out at a thirteen point oh five percent rate, which is slightly lower than last year at thirteen point one seven. Our students with disabilities, we're, we started tracking that this year, so we don't have a baseline. That's at four point one five percent. And our duly identified students, we also haven't tracked until this year, that's 10.34%. For our dropout notes, we did have 31 students withdraw this month. We were able to set two of those up in our adult ed program with Fallon Ecki and the intergenerational literacy program. We have three students who are, their locations are unknown, and we have 26 who have plans unknown. As we break down by grade, eight of those students were from grade nine, 10 from grade 10, eight from grade 11, and five from grade 12. For our mobility rate, we continue to see transience C. But this was the first time, I believe, in at least a few months that we had more out than in. So we had 44 students coming into the district and 63 going out, but a large number of those 63 were the dropouts. So that's why you see the high school level has 39 going out with 13 coming in. So for a grand total of 702 newly registered students coming into the district this year, with a total of 421 going out. Our failing grades for quarter three. Grade, grade nine, we have 507 total students in the grade. Eighty-four failed one grade in the third quarter. Sixty-three failed two classes, I should say. Fifty-three failed three and fifty-five failed four or more. At a rate of 50.3% of our students are failing at least one class. For our sophomores, they are doing slightly better and they actually track better in quarter three than quarter two. We have 438 sophomores, 79 of which failed one grade in quarter three. Fifty-nine failed two classes. Thirty-five failed three and 30 failed four or more for a rate of 46.3, which is a drop from the quarter two of 49.3%. And that concludes the indicators of success, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
I had a question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Enriquez has a question?
I had a question in terms of the students, the 31 students that already withdraw from the, from the whole school. Do you know if it is because of mobility, the mobility rate, or you don't know where they are, those 31 students?
Yeah, the location unknown means we don't know where they are. A lot of times, students leave without telling anyone and they go to another district or, but if they enroll in the district, sometimes we find out the following month. And so if they don't enroll right away, so for example, if they were to enroll in Springfield three weeks after they left, we might not get that information until they enroll. So we could find out that next, next month or next quarter that we find out, we, we might know where they are at that point. Because they all have state identified numbers that track their progress, so we would then be notified that they enrolled in another district.
Thank you so much for your report this evening. I just want to bring our attention to the CHS failing grades. I'm curious to know, of the failing grades, are these core content areas? Or do they lean towards core content areas like math or literacy versus electives?
That's a good, I don't have the answer to that question. It is a good question. I can try to see if I can find that out for you. I would imagine it's probably a mixed bag.
And if I can comment, so one of the reasons why we track ninth grade is because we know that if students get behind in credits in ninth grade, then they're more susceptible to dropping out later on, so we want to catch the students. So then that's when we kick into gear, credit recovery, summer school. We have Malik, I don't know if you want to come up to the podium and share a little bit of how you're working to recover some of our students who are failing classes, because that's something we want, we really want to prevent the dropout, but it starts at ninth grade. Because the research shows us, once they get several credits behind, then they're at risk for dropping out.
Yeah, the, you can, there's really a correlation between, and it's not just a Chelsea issue, it's across the board, it's a high school issue. It's one of the, the conundrums that we face in regards to the high school. It's hard when students are able to kind of pass on through the middle school grades and they get up to the high school and they're really not comprehending what credits mean, what classes mean in regards to graduation. So one of the things we'll be tackling, for example, in the, in the high school reimagination, is about how do we build these supports into the building, but also how do we build structures to get students to understand early that these passing grades matter because they compound upon each other? I used to work for alternative ed and 90% of the 19-year-olds that I, 20-year-olds that I saw in high school, they would go back and say, "I wish I could do my freshman year over again," because you build, you get into that kind of credit hole, and it takes a lot of work to get out of that. So we're really focusing on ensuring that we're trying to capture our kids early. I know Ellen Kokonidis in the, in the school departments as well are working, are moving that work down to the middle schools to try to get that message out to our eighth graders to understand what high school is kind of really about. We're looking at a lot of mentorship programs as well to get students really to understand what high school is really about. We're doing a lot of work at the transition program, with a transition summer school program that should support about 68th graders who kind of struggled and get them with a, with a step up into high school. They can earn some credits towards graduation just by running through summer school. So we know it's an issue, we're working really diligently to, to be able to provide those supports before they get to these numbers, but we also have those kind of, those nets, those safety nets that we're building out to ensure that even if they get to those numbers, that we're able to fix them, such as really progressive summer school, attaching credits to all of our after-school programs. Acceleration academies have credits to them. We sort of get the kids to them, but where we provided the operation so that we can support the needs of the students proactively, reactively, and as they're kind of going through their year.
Thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing that breakdown as well. Thank you.
Mr. Gomez, what's your name?
Yeah, I have a question. So I'm looking at the final total percentages for the previous school years, 2020 to 2021. They're all significantly lower than current, what's currently showing for quarter three. I'm just wondering if this total percentage was calculated by averaging all four quarters? That's just how my mind is working, could you confirm?
Which indicator are you referring to?
I'm looking at grade nine total percent, right? So for 2020 to 2021.
You're talking about dropout rate, passing grades, a tab?
I'm looking at the total percentage of failing grades, so.
Oh, okay.
31.8 is what I'm seeing for the 2020 to 2021 school year. Right above the gray line.
Right here, you're talking.
Yeah, so the 31.8%, I'm just wondering how that number is calculated? Is that the average of all four quarters? Could you confirm that for me?
It, so when you calculate a final grade, so for example, if you get DDDA, right? That might average out to be a C, right? So, or if you get FFAA, right? So you failed quarter one, you failed quarter two, but you didn't fail for your final grade. So they use the final grade. So for every course that students take that are year-long grades, they have a final grade that's attached, so they use those.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah. So I'm just wondering, with that information, I'm just wondering if there is a goal? So I know in earlier pages of this indicator of success, I'm seeing some clear goals just written out. So specifically, indicator two, district-wide daily attendance will be 95%. I'm wondering if there's anything that exists similar to that for the grades, for grades nine or 10? Is that something that the team is working on?
So you can see, it falls under an appendix, so it's not attached to a specific goal. But, I mean, the goal would be that we decrease the numbers. But it's not attached to a specific goal in this document. It falls under the appendix.
So my question is regarding that number, right? So like the total percentage at the end of the year. I'm wondering if there is a goal that is listed out somewhere that I could review?
Yeah, and that's what I'm answering, in, in this document, it's, there is not a specific goal to the failing grade percentage.
Okay, so it doesn't exist in this document, but does it exist at all?
Not that I know of.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was trying to understand.
I mean, the goal is we want the numbers to go down.
Yes, exactly.
So as we compare year to year, if the numbers are going down, we're moving in the right direction. And if they're moving up, we're moving in the wrong direction.
Exactly, I understand that. So that's why I think it's useful to have a number to work towards. That's hence my question. So thank you for that presentation and your answers.
So just to support, you can see in the front page, it has monthly and then by annual update, and then percent. And so that, all of these are tied to strategic goals, and so this feeds into the strategic goal of the graduation rate. So if you're asking specifically for this, we don't have, you know, of course, the goal is that none of our kids will fail courses. But this feeds into, the reason why we track is for graduation, so that falls into the graduation rate. It's like, all of this is culminating in a graduation rate. So even though our overall graduation rate for the district was 60, I believe it was 66%, 64%, Chelsea High School's graduation rate was 77%. Part of the reason why our graduation rates were a draw, were from Chelsea High School to the overall percent are lower is we also, Chelsea Opportunity Academy, we're holding kids for five years. And so that doesn't count towards the graduation rate. It actually kind of penalizes us at the end, but we're doing right for children and making, so Chelsea High School graduation rate is 77%. And we're capturing students, and that's why we monitor the amount of classes that our, that students are passing.
Ms. Perez?
I'm just gonna give a comment. I think, you know, the goals kind of like are more themselves for the kids, because you know, if they see somebody that is not coming, I think they have to specify the goal to make sure they help the kids that they're missing schools and what they're missing schools, and what is the issue, it's coming to them. So I think the explanation that he has gave is very good. And I think, you know, we have to work, I know we are doing so much different programs, but I think we should kind of like keep an eye on it so we can improve more. I know we have doing it, but I think we should keep an eye on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next part is our student representative updates.
Good evening, members of the school committee. We have a few general updates for tonight, but we also have some student survey breakdown updates as well. The National Honor Society had its induction on April 24th, inducting over 15 new members. National Honor Society has been contributing and giving back to the community in a variety of ways, whether it's cleaning up a park, organizing a blood drive, or just volunteering for an event, they were on it. The Chelsea High School Performing Arts, including concert band, orchestra, percussion ensemble, and cantare, performed a spectacle, a spectacle of music at a competition at Salem State last Friday, the 3rd of May. If you want a chance to see our visual or performing arts in action, we have one more, we have more events coming up, including Arts Night Out occurring on May 14th at 6:00 PM. One night of performances from concert band, percussion ensemble, woodwind ensemble, orchestra, cantare, and drama club. The Research Festival welcomes students to present their findings. They will be alongside presenters for researchers, research institutions such as Harvard University, or Harvard University, MGH, Boston University, and more. Since our data course pathways were introduced at Chelsea, which is a series of three classes, one of those classes data visualization. Students work hard toward creating projects for this, for this festival. We will also have our student survey data on display. Feel free to stop by and check out all the amazing data presentations in the Chelsea High School red gym. The start of May, we begin taking our final exams for AP classes and wrapping up the year. For the next two weeks, AP exams will be occurring, and we want to wish those students taking an exam the best of luck. In addition, the 10th grade MCAS for math is coming up as well, and we would like to wish them good luck as well. The Class of 2024's countdown has officially begun, and we would like to remind everyone that prom is only 10 days away on the 18th of May, and the last day for seniors is just 16 days away on the 24th of May. What the seniors last day is what comes after it, which is senior awards night, graduation rehearsals, and graduation. And on the behalf, on behalf of the Class of 2024, we hope to see you there.
Over the past couple of months, we have released a survey to Chelsea High students, surveying them on their personal experiences at the high school. We're excited to present the results today. We have created a one-page report, and for the public audience, you can also look at the screen, and school committee members have the printed copy. But our report is structured into two main sections. Factors that contributed to student success and areas of concern for students. Based on the top three choices in each category, we broke the data down even further. Also, we've included student quotes in the gray on the right side of the page. The survey received about 437 responses from students at CHS, out of 1,656 students. We had our survey open for about three weeks. There's roughly a similar percentage of the grade breakdown of those who took the survey, meaning we have fair representation from all grades. Regarding factors that contributed to student success, the top three identified by students are clubs and activities, a sense of belonging, and post-secondary success. 45.4% of students who took the survey stated clubs and activities contributed to their success at CHS. 35.5% stated a sense of belonging, and 17.8% stated in post-secondary success. Notably, 70.7% of students who highlighted a welcoming school environment emphasized the importance of positive teacher-student relationships. We also asked students to choose two things that they believe could be a focus CHS can improve upon. 39.9% of students who took the survey stated bathroom and safety were a primary concern. 31.9% stated attendance-related issues, and 13.2% stated in-school support.
While we did a breakdown for the attendance policy and bathrooms and safety categories, we want to highlight that we weren't able to do a breakdown for in-school support due to insufficient responses commenting on in-school support. We have attempted to highlight more of the in-school support through student quotes. Based on the open responses, we included common trends that came up in the bottom right of the report. We want to thank Ms. Knight, Dr. Jennings, and Ms. Peña, who helped us on this data collection process. Our survey serves as a crucial tool for understanding student perspectives and driving positive change within Chelsea High School. As we communicated in the previous school committee meeting, we have met with Principal Morales about our findings, and we're excited to work with him and the rest of the administration in improving our CHS community. We encourage next year's student representatives to use this data as a foundation to continue on these conversations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This was, this is great information to have, and we can see a lot of hard work went into this, and we thank you for doing this and for all the information you bring to us. It's very, I look forward to this, to the student updates every month.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, I actually just have a comment. I want to, this is very thorough, and I, I want to commend you guys for working and collaborating in such an unbiased and in such a mature way. Just because it takes a lot of, a lot of courage to bring some of the topics that you did to the table, not just to the administrative or like, you know, the authority figures, right? But also to bring some of these key topics to some of your peers, right? Because some of these topics are a little bit difficult to bring up to people that you're going to be seeing that you might not share the same opinions with. So I do commend you for that, and it's very important for us to know, you know, you're, you're, you're sitting here and you're basically the eyes and ears, and you're taking these responsibilities very, very seriously, because you're not, you're, you're using your positions as a global tool. You're not sitting here and using them for your own self-interest. And that's a very important thing, to be the collective eyes and ears and the voice of the, as many people as you possibly can. Because it could be a very slippery slope. So I commend you guys and I applaud you for being as young as you are and being as knowledgeable and understanding the massive responsibility that you have, right? Because I was once told, you know, you give a man power, man in, in, you know, very loosely terms, in general, right? Like give a person power and you'll, you'll learn the true colors. So thank you so much for this, and I appreciate it, I think we all do. And I appreciate your hard work, and I'm sure that you'll keep on, I'm, I'm gonna, I don't know what, one more month and, you know, I'm already suffering, so.
I don't want to talk about that either.
No, I know.
Every time someone's leaving, I don't want to talk about it, so we should move on to the next.
We, we suffer loss, we suffer loss, it's, it's hard, but yeah.
Have you noticed every time somebody's leaving, I say, "I don't want to talk about it"?
But yes, but I appreciate the transparency, so a lot of gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so I just want to say I really appreciate how you guys took this on and this is research. And so they are presenting at the Chelsea Research Festival, so. And then not only did they just gather and do the survey, they went to Principal Morales and are having a conversation about what popped from the survey, what are the issues and having conversations. And so I just want to thank you, how you approached this so professionally and in a way that is, is extremely productive and you gave Mr. Morales a gift with all this information and us too. So I just want to say thank you.
Right, and if we gather information and do nothing with it, it's useless information. It's just a bunch of words that we could do nothing with. So the fact that you guys moved on to the second step, which was approaching who could truly help in solution this, this is, this is truly what we look forward to and we look toward, for you and from the public and from everyone. We can be everywhere and we can see everything, so thank you. Yes?
I just want to say that thank you so much for the, the voice of the students, especially that you inside and you can see what we don't see. And it's very important for us to hear about you trying to improve what is not working. And I think that's a great job and I think that's a very way of fighting for justice and fighting for your rights. And I think, you know, whatever we can do to make a difference, we should do. Thank you.
All right, so I'll move on to the next report, which is our personnel report and we do share this data because we're, we do want to diversify our workforce. This year, it's, it is May, so we don't have too much movement. We've hired a hundred percent Caucasian, zero percent Hispanic, zero percent Black, and zero percent Asian Pacific Islander. And then the second report that I have is our enrollment report. We are ending this May with six thousand two hundred and ninety-three students and almost at six thousand three hundred. So it's been pretty steady the last couple of months and so I'd like to commend these two reports for the record.
Can I hear a second? And I'd like to commend the subcommittee minutes to the report. Can I hear a motion?
Motion, I second the motion.
Thank you. We will move on to new business as there is no unfinished business. We'll start off with our first item, which is consideration in action to accept twenty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Title III Part A Immigrant Children and Youth Grant. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
And Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven affirmative, two action, two absent, motion passes. Second item, consideration in action to accept the gift of two thousand dollars from the New England Patriots Foundation to pay the cost of officials for girls' flag football. Can I hear a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
And Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven, seven in the affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Next item is consideration in action to accept the gift for two thousand five hundred dollars from the Boston College for the Youth Leadership Initiative, Y L I. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Next item, consideration in action to accept, adopt the enclosed Chelsea School Committee operating protocols. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Next item, consideration in action to accept the accommodation of the superintendent to approve the following three field trips. First, out-of-state field trip to Canterbury Lake Park in Salem, New Hampshire for a hundred students, ten chaperones for the eighth grade end-of-year field trip on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four and one superintendent chairperson? No? Okay. Roll call?
Excuse me, Chair Hernandez, I just found a typo. It should be four field trips that we're approving tonight.
Four, okay, I'm sorry. Four field trips, not three, but go ahead. First, are we gonna, I'm gonna read all four. Overnight out-of-state field trip to the University of Oregon for the Nike Outdoor Track and Field Nationals for five student athletes completing, competing in the competition and three chaperones from June, from June tenth to June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The next one is an overnight out-of-state trip to Mount Cardigan, New Hampshire for the Outdoor Experience Workshop for eight students, three chaperones from June twenty-ninth to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. And the fourth one is an overnight out-of-state field trip to Millbury College in Millbury, Vermont for three students, two chaperones for reach students participating in a film festival from July eleventh to July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Gomez Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Cobas Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. Valderas?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. Please include me in all the field trips. And I wanted to ma- make a couple of announcements. First, wanted to tell everybody, we went to the middle school concert today and it was, at the clock school and it was so amazing. I was just left in awe with these children. The talent is incredible. I sat there in complete awe. I can't even, I took piano for five years, can't play a single tune, but to see them is amazing. And secondly, I wanted to take a moment of silence for our committee member's grandmother that passed away, Myra's grandmother, passed away peacefully. And we wanted to take a moment of silence if we could, please. Thank you. If anybody else had any announcements they'd like to make?
I just wanted to thank the teachers from the Chelsea Teachers Union for being here tonight and sharing some of your experiences. I really want to like thank you guys for your service, your service to not only our community but our stu-, not only our students but also our community. It's great sometimes being able to see some of y'all in the hallways when I'm there and I'm hoping that, you know, we can work together to find some mutually agreeable contracts because, yeah, wanting to have a family is real and all of your points are, I personally believe that they're valid. So thank you for sharing that and I hope that y'all will continue to stay in Chelsea and I'm hoping that we can make that happen. And yeah, that's all I have and thank y'all as well for the community update, the school updates as well. Super useful.
Thank you.
So I will try to be brief. I want to also thank everyone here for your time, your testimonies, very powerful. I want to first say, you know, being that it is Mental Health Awareness Month, I want to thank the district for the work that we do have and I want to acknowledge the fact that we do have many events throughout both the city and the school departments that are going to be overlapping each other sometimes unfortunately. We have different types of communications throughout. We do the parent square for the schools and then we do have our online communications via either social media platforms or the, just I guess the city websites. Sometimes they're not updated to the best of the, you know, or like real live and we, we're working on that, both the city and, you know, the schools, so thanks. But the E L C just did this amazing three-week workshop for parents and it was so candid because, you know, the amount of information that we just, as parents and just teachers also just, and staff members share, it's, it's incredible. The, just the, it's, it's such a vulnerable space and it's, especially with parenting and everything else that we just get to understand that, A, we're not in this alone and a lot of the experiences that are both happening within the classroom, the behavioral, and now, everyone's in it together and overall, we just want to support each other and just to see how far the educational system has come. And a lot of the work that we can do here today is also in part because the legislature has changed and also, you know, the people behind it and the, the faces have also changed. So knowing that we are able to support the decision-making is also very empowering. So to be able to help us, help you, help us is really nice and to see it as a parent and to just get that feedback is, is really nice. Mother's Day is around the corner and as lovely as it might be for many, I think it's worth noting that there's people that are trying to become mothers that are, you know, that are in the process. There's people that are, you know, fighting the uphill battle, not just because of paternity leave, but also because of infertility issues. There's people that are having loss. There's people that, you know, are suffering just the loss of a present child that they just have strained relationships. So I, I do invite everyone to just, on that special day, just remember to just kind of hold space for those that, you know, I think it's, it's very, again, we're in that mental health state, so it's, it's a trying time. So if you're fortunate enough to be able to spend it with your loved ones, then just cherish those times. I know the Research Festival has been very dear to our colleague here and I believe it's tomorrow if I'm not mistaken. So if you're able to, to do that, a lot of hard work has gone from our fellow members as well. I know Malik and Sully have worked also alongside, along with our students, so. And we have, I believe, on the twenty-third, the Mental Health Day, right? So very big hit with the students as well. So as I mentioned, a lot of events throughout the month. Oh, and Memorial Day celebrations for City Hall and our students will most likely be performing as well. The band did not disappoint, I'm telling you. There's lots of events coming up, so that's it for me, so thank you.
Ms. Cabral?
And I just wanted to again highlight our work in our operating protocols. This is something that we've been working on for the past couple of months. Thank you so much, Deli and Sarah Neville, who led the charge to develop our operating protocols, which is our standards for how we work as a board, our responsibilities. And again, want to thank our subcommittee chair for leading that work as well to ensure that each of our members feel empowered to advocate for our students, staff, and the larger community here in Chelsea. And hopefully this serves as a guide for future onboarding school committee members as they orient themselves to this work and recognize that we need to be empowered in this work too. So really just appreciative of central office support to ensure that we have something set in stone that folks can leverage during this time. And just want to thank all those that came in person, that were recognized today, from students to the staff and the teachers that shared their experiences today. As a former teacher, it's very near and dear to me, so thank you so much. And yeah, I hope everyone has a great evening. I'll turn it back to our chair.
I just want to share something, I'm sorry. I just want to say thank you to you, all of you. I know what it feels, I was a teacher too and sometimes we just feel that we need support and I think, you know, it's good to kind of like come up and just say your experience, your, how do you have, you know, going through, but at the same time, I feel that if we work together, we can make a difference. And especially, you know, it's very important to be with loved ones and, and we are working to put everything together and, you know, to make sure that we can work something. Thank you so much for coming and sharing your, your experiences and your testimonies and we are working. Thank you.
Ms. Cobas? All right, and she has one more thing she would like to talk about.
Sorry, lastly, and I also want to say that.
Don't believe her when she says lastly.
No, 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 but for real this time, apologies. And I, I also do want to thank Myra and Sarah because they were able to make it to speak to Senator DiDomenico on behalf of our school committee just to further advocate for just our education and just some of the, just the disparities that we are seeing that, again, Dr. Bada has already spoken to the senator as well. We've spoken to them on multiple occasions, but this is officially was an invitation for us at the State House and they were able to carve out some time and make it there, so. Given the fact that she has just suffered such a massive loss, it, it speaks volumes, so.
We have a very committed school committee. I feel privileged to be a part of this, this committee. I feel that we have an amazing relationship. We support each other and we work together. I, I hope that the teachers' union understands that we truly want to make things work for everyone. We would love to be able to give everything. We really, we really do. I, I am extremely devoted to the city of Chelsea and the schools in Chelsea, as my colleagues are. And I want, I wish that we could give everything. It would be so much easier than trying to do everything that we're trying to do. And, and I appreciate all your hard work in your roles and with the, with the union. I don't ever want you guys to think that this is a enemy. Either we're against each other because that's not what we truly want this to ever come across as being. So we, we are going to work towards trying to make what we can work and we're going to work with you guys with everything we can. So I thank you all. I thank you, I also, I was at the National Honor Society induction and was so, again, in awe when I see all of our students and everything that you, that they have achieved. Chelsea has come a long way, a long, long way and I feel honored to represent Chelsea and represent our schools and it makes me very happy and it makes us all. I think we all want everything, we want to succeed. And we also have a tremendous amount of, what a lot of people don't understand is that we have a school system that has tremendous amounts of children coming constantly in from everywhere with not knowing the language and this all makes the. and this all makes the work even harder, but yet nobody ever stops and says, "We don't wanna work with you." Everybody continues to work and continue to strive to make this all work, and that's what makes Chelsea such an amazing place. So little, but so strong. So, I will stop talking now. Does anybody else have anything? Thank you, thank you for coming, and, and this, could I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I will second it.
Thank you.